Those that are in the regio, this is a model. For the judiciary, because in the regio of Europe, the prince had to be able to. The prince had to make the laws. He received the authority from the king. And then. When the government established with Washington. They decided to divide the construction of the regio into three. For example. A group of persons. This will be. The other group of persons. They are responsible for the. They are not. And then they do an investigation, they do a report, they do an investigation. But who is responsible for the government? The governor. Who is called. Judiciary. The judiciary. And then. Yeah. Yeah. So. The county. The county. On the actual. And the mayor is actually heavily executed. The mayor is in charge of the decisions. The governor by the offices. There's different offices. But one of its employees. The mayor's. The mayor. So the.
Not a financial plan. That's right.
All right, good evening. I will open the Provo City Planning Commission hearing for August 22nd. And before we get started this evening, I'll just make a few housekeeping. Announcements. The items on the agenda for this evening that are not asterisks are for planning commission approval, disapproval, or continuance. The items with an asterisk require legislative action by the municipal council, and we will be making a recommendation on those items. In addition, we have a new policy for the evening, or beginning this evening. And as members of the public and our neighborhood chairs address the podium, besides announcing your name and affiliation, we will also have a sign-in sheet. So we'd appreciate it if you would sign in as well. All right. So we will begin this evening with a prayer by Ms. Ellsworth and a pledge of allegiance by Mr. Howard.
Our dear, kind Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity to serve our community and to hear from members of our community and our neighbors. We ask you that that will help us to use sound judgment and good wisdom, and that we can show respect and love for everyone that we meet tonight. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the commissioners' roll call this evening, starting with Mr. Howard, please.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Russell Phillips. Just making aware, I have a home occupation permit we'll be discussing tonight.
Brian Smith, I have no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening. Item one, IHC Healthcare Services, Inc., requests a conditional use permit to allow for a sign height of 25 feet located at 1134 North, 500 West, in the healthcare facilities zone, which is HCF. This affects the North Park neighborhood, and Mr. Wright will present this item.
All right, thank you. So the applicant has proposed to locate a sign at the intersection near Bulldog and 500 West here. It will be replacing one of their existing signs. And the type of sign that they're requesting is a freestanding pole sign that has, it's a three-sided sign, that's an electronic display with high churn. This item was heard by the planning commission previously and continued, and is brought before you today. The sign here has been reviewed by staff and found that the sign would meet applicable codes with the issuance of a conditional use permit to allow for the height of the sign to be 25 feet. All the other aspects of the sign are permitted uses, or permitted aspects for a sign, such as the sign type is electronic display sign, that's a permitted sign. The location of the sign meets the requirements within the code. And. So it's really what we're looking at is the height of the sign as far as the conditional use permit tonight is concerned. Those permitted items are within the city code, and those have been permitted as a decision as legislative. Well, so the ordinance that we have was a legislative approval to allow for those as permitted uses within the zone. And so if the planning commission believes that the signage ordinance that we have in the code is not what it should be, then the proper channel to change that would be to look towards initiating some amendments to the city code as far as the legislative item would be. So the brightness of a sign of this type is regulated in the code already. That was something that came up in the last meeting as concern from some of the neighbors, was how bright the sign would be, or where it would be located, and things of that nature. So again, those are things that are already in the code. There's regulations in place to control the brightness of these types of signs, the churn rate of these types of signs, that's already regulated. And that's not what this conditional use permit is for. Again, that's just for the sign height. So at the last meeting, the applicant mentioned that they were willing to have the sign be turned off with that certain hours of the night. And so they're comfortable having the sign turned off at midnight, and then back on at 5:00 a.m. Also, since the last meeting, they have revised it so that they are moving the sign back 10 feet from where they had previously shown the sign location. As you can see here, it would be 10 feet farther back. And so those are some of the changes, or some of the things that they've been willing to do to try to help mitigate some of those concerns that were brought up in the last meeting. And so if there's any additional questions that I could help with, I'd be happy to do so now.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yeah, it says here the applicant is Yesco, but the property owner is Intermountain. What's, I guess, I thought we were interacting with Intermountain, but we are interacting with Yesco. Can you explain the relationship?
Yeah, so the hospital, IHC, has asked Yesco to be the, I guess, the applicant in this case. So they're working together on this item. And another thing I think I can also point out would be, I'll go back here to the map. So we also looked at some of the adjacent properties here. Since the last meeting, we looked across the street to the north. There's a large shopping commercial center there where these types of electronic display signs are also permitted, are also allowed along Bulldog Boulevard. Within that zone that those are in, those are permitted use. And they would, and the sign height could go up to 35 feet as a permitted use. So just to kind of put that in perspective, as we talk about this area and this intersection, just to bring that to your attention, that across the street, that that would be a, this sign could be 10 feet taller than what they're requesting, and it would be a permitted use as opposed to a conditional use that this one is.
Because that property is zoned, commercial?
Zoned SC2, yeah, commercial zone, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Mr. Rowan?
Can you help me, or help us just better understand the nature of the conditional use permit? I mean, as I read the staff report, it very much, as I read it, it very much felt to me that essentially what the staff is saying is, you really don't have any choice here. What, why call it conditional, I mean, what's the nature of a conditional use permit if there is no choice really here before us? What's the point of a conditional use permit?
Yeah, so a conditional use permit basically is going to say that a certain use is permitted, once it's listed in the code as even a conditional use. But it's subject to coming to the planning commission, and if there's detrimental impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the area there, that there's an impact that can be seen, that the planning commission has the option to be able to place conditions on the property that can mitigate that negative detrimental impact that the use would be creating. So as opposed to a permitted use where they could just put it there, it gives a little discretion there to determine if there's a condition that can mitigate that exact detrimental effect. So the first thing the planning commission would do would be to identify what the detrimental effect is, that, for example, what this sign would be causing. Once that's been done, they would say what conditions can be placed on this use to mitigate those items. And if, in the event that there's absolutely nothing, no conditions that could be done, which would be, probably be something really hard to prove, then at that point, the planning commission could deny the conditional use permit. But really, there's a lot of things that you'd have to look into, but after you first establish what that detrimental effect or impact is, and then consider what conditions could be placed that are reasonable, that could reasonably fix that detrimental impact.
Okay, so those ought to be, in your mind, the parameters of our discussion tonight, is that, right? What are the, what are the detriments? Can we support the claims that those are detriments? And then what are the conditions that we might place upon the sign to mitigate against those detriments?
Correct, yeah. Your first thing would be to say what substantial evidence is there that this is an impact that isn't just someone's feelings or thoughts, you know? It's actually something that's proven, there's factual record. Like, for example, if a code existed that required something, or something that's a factual, proven thing, then, once you've established that, then you could go and say, what are the reasonable conditions that we could mitigate that with?
But we can't require that same standard of the applicant because it's in the ordinance, which is to say, I remember the discussion last time, we had asked, you know, what evidence do you have that an LED sign that, you know, is rotating, you know, significantly enhances your business? And I was really unpersuaded by the answer. It seemed entirely anecdotal. But because, but because the ordinance allows signs, they don't have to have, they don't have to carry the burden of evidence that that would, that would require. Well, tell me why you need a sign that's of this nature, because it's already, okay?
Yeah, they need to meet the requirements of 1402040, or 1404040. It's in your staff report, those general conditions for approval of a conditional use permit. But as far as the type of sign, it's allowed in the ordinance. The size of the sign they're proposing, it's allowed by ordinance. The location is allowed by ordinance. They've willingly agreed to move it back 10 feet, which is fine, but that intersection, that area is permitted. So only thing you're debating tonight is that incremental difference between a five-foot sign and a 25-foot sign. What impact does that additional height having on the neighborhood? And what needs to be a condition of approval in order to permit that additional height?
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright?
Sorry, how do we define high churn?
So high churn in our code is defined as the copy on the sign on the electronic display being able to change every eight seconds. And it's a static image, and it doesn't have a transition, like it doesn't fade out and fade in, it just changes.
Could you point out the other signs along Bulldog that are of similar height, or?
Along Bulldog? Probably not, but let me go. The applicant had prepared this, kind of a comparison of sign heights. So I don't know if you can read those, but on the far left, you have University Place up in Orem. That's an electronic display sign. I can't see what the height is there, but you can kind of see the comparison. On the far right is the Fat Cats sign on Bulldog. And the one next to that, the second one on the, to the end, is the one that Intermountain is proposing.
CVS Pharmacy. The third one from the right, CVS Pharmacy, would also be on Bulldog.
That's helpful, thank you.
The Fat Cats one is full motion, I believe. I think that was put in before our current code, and I think it's full motion.
All right, any other questions or comments for staff? Okay, if not, I'd like to invite the applicant, Yesco LLC, to present their project, please.
My name is, my name is Jeff Krantz.
Sorry, your microphone wasn't working.
We good? My name is Jeff Krantz, K-R-A-N-T-Z, I'm with Young Electric Sign Company.
Ethan Shumway with Intermountain Healthcare. And work here at Utah Valley Hospital. Just wanted to thank you for your consideration this evening. We have been, as you know, investing in the local community with a significant hospital rebuild. We're excited to be nearing completion of that project. We've invested $430 million into the hospital replacement project. And this sign has always been something that we have hoped for as part of the hospital reconstruction, that it would give us an opportunity to communicate to the local community and share messages of health and wellness, to promote wellness among local residents. I want to stress the difference that you might see in this sign compared to, you know, the large sign and messages you might see at University Place, where the messages, certainly by nature of the businesses that are marketing there, would be quite different from what you would see here. If this sign were to be improved, you would expect to see signs encouraging people to get mammograms and encouraging cancer screenings. We might put messages out there to promote a wellness walk, to bring awareness for cancer services, or talking about our heart program. So again, I want to stress these would not be moving images, no video of any kind. And would very much like to see approval of this. As we've really worked hard to be compliant with the code, be sensitive to the, some of the requests of the neighbors through the years. We've really tried to be excellent neighbors, as many of you are aware, with the neighbors who have lived to the south of campus. And further, there may be question as to why on the corner. It's clear, as you look at the aerial map, there's certainly lots of stop traffic at lights and others, people crossing the crosswalk. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to share our messages with passersby. And we believe we've done it in a safe way and one that will be effective as well.
I just want to mention, we did these silhouettes, because I think at the last meeting, you know, there were some misconceptions, I think, regarding the size of the sign and relative to other signs. And when you read 25 feet, or it just sounds bigger than it is, and you don't see a comparison. So I tried to go around and measure these signs, these are accurate. Were probably very similar in size to the CVS Pharmacy down on Bulldog. It probably appears similar in size to Fat Cats, because the Fat Cats one I know was mentioned in the last meeting, because the Fat Cats, a little bit smaller in size, but it's 30 feet closer to the road. It's right on the property line. So we're, we want to be a good neighbor here, we want to set it back, we want to have good landscaping around it, we don't want to have it be, you know, any kind of an issue. And your ordinance is actually very well-written and very, it's extremely restrictive in that it has the most restrictive dimming levels and the brightness levels all called out, just like the Federal Highway Act does on billboards that are on the freeway, the dimming levels, the brightness levels, and the change time. So eight-second hold of a message. I think people drive by, it was brought up, the University Mall, and how big one on the corner is, got action and video and flashing and blinking, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an eight-second slideshow to convey messages. You can only put a few words in an image that is readable. And I don't know, Dustin, if you want to show them the other sign study we did. We initiated a sign study after, and we put up an 18-inch letter. Yeah, so these, we actually hung a panel in place, because I think part of the misconception on size on the last meeting was that our renderings were just, our designers putting them in the way they think they are, the way they think they would look. But we didn't want that to be the case. We wanted to go back and actually determine exactly to scale what they would be like in the real world. So we took these pictures from all angles. We hung a panel that was eight foot by 14 foot from every angle, and then put the sign to the proper scale, so that you, there's no misunderstanding about the scale of it. And an 18-inch letter and how far that could be read. 18 inches is pretty typical of what we'd be able to put on if we had a message like, you know, 5K cancer run. You might be able to get four or five words with an 18-inch letter. So we tried to make it accurate. We worried that last time we came here, things weren't accurate, and I think people had a misconception of the overall size. had a misconception of the overall size. And I'm happy to answer any, any questions about any of that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions for the applicants? If not, thank you so much.
We're happy to come back up if there's questions.
Thank you. Right, are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to address this item? And please state your name and sign in for the record.
My name is Kirby, I'm the North Park Neighborhood Chair, the neighborhood where this is proposed. Thank you for your time tonight, and also like to thank the hospital, they've been good to work with, they've participated in the neighborhood meetings that we've had. We had a couple neighborhood meetings, and I just wanted to clarify a couple things. Dustin said this was continued from, this was a continued item. Actually, it was denied. When, when it was proposed to be a 25-foot sign at, at that height, I believe Brian made the motion, it was denied. And what you asked the hospital to do was to come back with, to take a look at what they could do to mitigate this, whether that's moving the sign or shrinking it down a little bit. And what is permitted, the, the staff has also said in their report that this is a permitted sign in this area. What's permitted in this area is a five-foot sign. They could have a five-foot electronic sign, they wouldn't need to come to Planning Commission, we wouldn't have this meeting. But they're, they're allowed to make application for a conditional use permit for a sign that would exceed five feet, up to 25 feet. So, it's not permitted as a right for them to get this sign. What is permitted is for them to make application for this. And correctly, as it is in the staff report, you have the burden of judging whether or not exceeding five feet, going up to 25 feet, that the impacts are great enough that there, it warrants conditions for this sign. And the neighborhood is going to respect the decision you make. My job as the neighborhood chair is just to share the concerns that the neighborhood had. The neighborhood brought up the brightness, and they brought up a few other concerns, but by far, the biggest concern that the neighborhood had was not that this was a 25-foot sign, and not that it was an electronic sign, but that it was a 25-foot electronic sign at this location. And I can, I can understand that, that Yesco thought this might be about perspective, but at these neighborhood meetings, we discussed at length what a 25-foot sign looks like, how big their sign area would be, that it would be three-sided. And we talked about other signs in the neighborhood, in the, in the area that are like that. And very few of those ones that, that they showed are near an intersection. The Fat Cats one is. But, as staff pointed out, that was completed when we had a different ordinance in place. If we were trying to judge whether or not a multifamily complex should be approved, and all we did was show a silhouette of how many stories this multifamily complex was, that wouldn't be enough information for you to judge whether or not we should approve that. We would want to know where that multifamily complex is, what the access looks like, are there any, is there any, a neighbor next door that would be hindered by something that would go higher? And I think this is a similar circumstance. Like staff brought up, the impacts you should be measuring are the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And when we presented last time as a neighborhood, we shared research with you that there are significant impacts to safety when you put an, when you put an electronic sign at an intersection. And even the Federal Highway Administration discourages electronic signs at intersections because, because they are designed to distract drivers. Brian, you brought up last time, you said, "Well, everybody's texting anyway." The state has passed laws in recent years to restrict, to make it illegal to text while you drive. Texting, you can't do anything about that, Brian, I understand. But you do have the ability with this conditional use permit to apply conditions to this sign to make that intersection safer for drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists. That's all we're asking, as you look at it. Again, the neighborhood is not against a 25-foot sign, they're not against electronic sign. What they have concerns with is a 25-foot electronic sign at this specific location. We feel like there could be a better location that would be off the intersection and that would have less of an impact to the safety of people who use that intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kirby. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this item? And again, please state your name and sign in for the record.
Hi, I'm Aaron Scablin, I'm the co-chair of the River Grove Neighborhood, which is just down the street on Columbia Lane, once you cross the river. So, this sign would be visible from our neighborhood. And it more relevant, I think, folks from our neighborhood in car, in driving on foot and on bike would be, be using this intersection frequently. So, my concern, also, I'm here as a representative of the Provo Bicycle Committee, I'm a project coordinator with that committee, so I'd like to speak on behalf of, of the bicycling community in Provo as well. So, my concerns, our concerns relate to safety, which Kirby highlighted. And I, I guess I'd just like to echo what Kirby said about the nature of those concerns. Also, I have one question for the applicant. My understanding is, with the Bulldog project that will be happening early next spring, that the hospital has agreed to give the city some right-of-way on that very corner. And that would basically move, mean that moving the, the sign back 10 feet would not really make much of a difference if, because that corner is going to be moved inward toward the hospital. So, that, are, is my, are, are my views, and, and also, I'd like to pose that question. And if the hospital doesn't know, maybe David Day from Public Works might be able to address that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day, could you clarify about whether the intersection will be widened, additional right-of-way taken for the roadbed?
Yeah, David Day with Public Works. Yeah, part of our design is to widen that out, and I haven't looked at the plan lately, but I'm sure that the hospital could incorporate that into their setbacks, I'm guessing. But that, that will change the way it looks now, right now on the aerial. So, yeah, that is a consideration.
So, the, the turn radius is going to be increased, is that correct? You'll have a larger turn radius?
Let me see if I can point this out. The, the radius is essentially the same, it, it's, it's pulling this back a little bit to make enough room to create the green space in between the lanes right there. So, so this, this sidewalk alignment will move south a little bit, but can you turn the parcels on to that aerial? It seemed like we had already made that property transfer, but, anyway. Or is this not our GIS?
Yeah, I think it's just an, an aerial snapshot.
Okay, sorry. But that, that property line, if it hasn't changed, will change.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Clarifies. Any, any other questions for Mr. Day? Thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
Hi, my name is Eric Chase, I'm the vice chair in the North Park Neighborhood. I do want to thank you guys and thank the hospital and Yesco, they have come to a couple neighborhood meetings, and they, they have expressed a willingness to work with us and try and find a good solution to, to put some signage on their property, because I know that's important to them. My, I have a few concerns about the nature of this intersection, because you're coming down State Street, and when you get to that intersection, the, the hospital property and the potential sign location is directly in front of you, so it's a little bit different than being on a 90-degree angle corner. And I, I also, my other concern is that this sets off kind of a signage war for all the other businesses on State Street and Bulldog. You know, if the hospital gets an electronic sign, Target gonna want an electronic sign, and CBS want an electronic sign, and I don't think anybody wants Las Vegas Boulevard running down the middle of Provo. But those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the community who would like to speak to this item? If not, I will invite the applicant back up to address any issues that were raised.
Madam Chair, just to clarify the last point that was made, electronic display signs aren't allowed on Fifth West.
Are not?
Are not.
Thank you.
So, as far as starting an electronic war, it could happen on Bulldog, but not on Fifth West. Then, the size of your sign is dictated by the amount of frontage you have. So, again, the possibility of somebody doing a large sign, if you look at how this is parceled out on the north side, isn't very likely. The other thing I think that makes this difficult to evaluate from the Planning Commission perspective is, if this zone by right allows a 35-foot tall electronic sign, and that's permitted in the zone, that doesn't have to come to you or anybody else. I don't know how you differentiate between that and saying that 35 is fine there, but 25 is not acceptable here. I, I don't, I don't know how to craft findings that would justify that.
I think we'll let the applicant answer questions first, thank you.
I was just going to say, we want to do this one time, we don't want to move the sign. And I know that in some of the discussions with the neighborhood council, Kirby mentioned that there was possible changes to this intersection on the drawing boards, we weren't able to really solidify exactly what those road widens were. And I don't know if they've been fully, fully outlined, but we, we'd be happy to work with the traffic engineers or UDOT, whoever's involved, to make sure that we, we aren't in a situation where we need to move it back. We, we have to bring power, power there and data there and put a sign base in. We'd rather comply to a setback that will not, not be a problem if there is a little bit of a road widening. So, if, if there was, if we were to work with your traffic engineers to make sure we were okay on that road widening, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. It was brought up that you had communicated the willingness to turn off the sign from midnight to 5:00 AM, does that, is that true?
Yeah, that's, I mean, not typical, but we, I, I think Intermountain, it was actually Mike Rossin who was with us at the city council, or the neighborhood council meeting, but, I mean, the intention is to try to be a good neighbor in this situation and, and try to find a balance. And, and so, shutting off the sign between, the LED sign between midnight and 5:00 AM was something that was offered, as well as, as well as the additional setback from the Clearview area that's already back a lot farther than the, the ordinance reads. But we've got the planter there, and, and as long as we don't infringe on parking spaces, we're, we're willing to comply to that.
I would concur.
Any other questions for the applicants at this time, from the commissioners? Mr. Riley?
I don't have a question for the applicants, but I, I don't know if it's okay to have a question for Kirby, Neighborhood Chair.
What's the procedure on that?
Just really quickly, Kirby, as you were talking, and as I understand, our, our role here tonight, we need to have, in order to deny this proposal, we would need to have clear evidence that there was, there were detriments that could not be mitigated. And so, I just wanted to ask you, were there, were there discussions in the neighborhood where mitigation ideas came up, other than moving the sign somewhere off that, off that intersection? Were there any other things that, that your residents in your neighborhood proposed or suggested?
Yes, we, we discussed three things, and, and by the way, the representative who's not here now, that was with IHC, agreed to being flexible with the location and the size of the sign. So, it was the location of the sign, perhaps not being on that corner, but further down Bulldog, off the, off the intersection. The size of the sign, that it could go down lower instead of being up 25 feet. And by being lower, the sign area would have to decrease proportionally, because that's the way that the ordinance is written. They, they get to be that big because it's that high. That's one of the reasons why they want to go 25 feet, because they can max out the sign area.
I think that's accurate, is that accurate?
And your size of sign is based on your frontage, not on your height of the sign.
So, there's, so, there's no?
So, they could do one that's six feet tall and is the same size.
Okay.
That they're proposing.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. And then the third was the option to dim or turn off the light, which the mall, I mean, which the hospital said as well, was something they could look at. So, those three. Thanks.
If I could just add, the monument signs and pole signs are kind of defined that way in this, in, in city ordinances, because they're either a low-profile sign that people can see over, or they're a, a sign that has a clearance from the bottom of the main sign square footage that you can see under. So, having, we've tried to minimize the, the base around the pole, still tying it in architecturally to the building. And maybe you could show back the, the overall view one last time, but we, the one that's taken right there. We've tried to tie it into the architecture with that, but also try to keep a clear line of sight under, under the sign. So, and that's just the nature of a pole sign versus a monument sign.
Thank you. Ms. Ellsberg?
I just wanted to ask the applicant, there's LED screens on three sides, is that right? And so, it looks to me like two sides are, are displaying images into the trees, and one side is displaying an image into the intersection.
Yeah, it is triangular, and I know that we're, we're putting this into a rendering, we're, we're going to try to keep the clear views between, between the trees viewable from similar types of angles that the other photographs were taken for, for traffic, but still do all the landscaping, but try to not make it hard to read. A hard-to-read sign is sometimes worse than anything. So, we want to be able to keep short, clear messages on a slideshow that are just easy to read, and, and not setback so far you can't read them, or too small to read, all this is part of it. So, it's, so, just trying to keep a clean, concise conveyance of messages that are short with an image that change every eight seconds. And, but, but to answer your question, it is three-sided, the views are angled toward each of the major traffic views.
Additionally, the, the rendering was put together without knowing the existing landscaping. We just put trees in this week, so, I think we planned it such that, that the trees will not block the view of, of the sign, so.
Just some eye candy on the rendering, right?
Thank you.
But that is accurate to scale.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? See none, thank you, appreciate it. I will turn this back over to the commissioners for discussion. And actually, I'm going to start.
Okay.
And this is a question for staff. If Fifth West prohibit- If Fifth West prohibits electronic signs, and this is at the intersection of Fifth West and Bulldog, how does that comply? Because it certainly, if it's three-sided, it's facing State Street or Fifth.
Yeah, so on signage, we don't, it's, it's the location of the sign. We don't regulate which way they orient their, their sign or anything like that. And then as far as location, uh, we consider this as being on the frontage of Bulldog and, and, you know, not farther down on, um, 500 West, so.
Is that an accurate plan drawing? The orientation of the sign?
No, that's just a, a place marker.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Howard?
I don't have any questions, and I, I'm sensing the temperature of my fellow commissioners, and I understand their perspective. I think, uh, when this came up before, given where this particular sign is, um, I personally, uh, do not have an objection, given the, the size of the building that is behind there, the, uh, infrastructure, and, and it seems appropriate for the intersection, given what's likely to go across the street and what's along Bulldog as it is now. Um, uh, I understand that aesthetics and signage are much in the eye of the beholder. It seems to me that this sign, uh, does meet the electronic code. And, uh, I think on that basis, uh, it would be hard to deny, and I think it's appropriate for where it's being positioned. And that's my view.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Ms. Ellsworth?
So there are no electronic signs permitted on 500 West, but we, but, um, there are 35-foot electronic signs permitted on Bulldog, is that right? Like regardless of zone?
So electronic display signs, that, we'll call that the sign type. On Bulldog Boulevard, that's a permitted use. You can have electronic display signs. So the way the code is written is it calls out which corridors allow for those. And so they're not prohibited on 500 West, they're just not, uh, included there. I guess that means they're prohibited, um, but they're not, it's not called out as prohibited. It's just, it shows which corridors within the city electronic display signs are permitted on. The height of the sign is based off of the zone that it's in. So the 35-foot height, uh, that we mentioned today was for the zone to the north of this one, which is in the SC2 zone. That allows for 35-foot-high, uh, sign, pole sign. It could be electronic display or not, if, on the preference that they choose as a permitted use. On this side, um, it's a different zone, and so it's a 25-foot-high conditional use for that type of sign.
Across the street are commercial zones. There's a commercial zone on both sides that doesn't allow for electronic signs, but again, it allows pole signs of 35 feet.
Mr. Rowan?
I find myself in a bit of a frustrating, in a bit of frustration, um, and I don't know that this is, uh, going to be, um, resolved tonight, but I, you know, I found, I find myself, uh, really persuaded by, um, Kirby's argument about location of sign. And it sounds like our current, our current ordinance doesn't really consider the location of the sign. That is to say, you know, again, say across the street, 35-foot sign would be allowed anywhere. You know, we, we don't right now take any consideration at all where it's located. And it, it does make sense to me that our ordinance maybe ought to, uh, think about that a little bit more than, than it does right now. But it doesn't, and there are so many things to do, and so few resources to do it with. I mean, that's a, uh, and I feel like I find myself, or we find ourselves in this situation a lot, where we have ordinances that, uh, put us into a position that we'd really rather not take, but there are so many things that we're trying to address and, and no time, no, not enough staff, uh, to, uh, go back. And, you know, this is a relatively small fight to fight amidst all the other things that I think, um, uh, we need to, uh, address. And so that's, that is just a little bit frustrating for me, uh, and it's a, and it's a continuation of a pattern that I feel like we find ourselves in over and over again. I don't, uh, you know, again, I know that in order, as I understand staff, and as I understand the staff report, you know, in order to, uh, deny this, um, deny this request, uh, and this is a totally new way of thinking about conditional use permitting, um, for me. I mean, I, I've, uh, you know, I, I always thought that the burden was on the applicant, so to speak, and it's, the way that the staff report is written, it sounds like the burden is on us, that we have to grant the conditional use permit unless, um, unless we have hard evidence that there are, um, detrimental consequences, uh, and then we need to propose the, the, um, the mitigating, uh, steps that we might take. And I'm embarrassed to say, I've just come to this, uh, I've come to this conversation without having spent, you know, invested a significant, a significant amount of time doing research on, um, electronic signs, LED signs at intersections. I don't feel like I have, um, you know, the evidence it would require, uh, for me to say that, you know, I, I know that the, the neighborhood chair, um, of the nearby neighborhood has said things, and, and I wish that I had those, um, with me, but I, you know, I, I don't know if, if taking Kirby's word for it is enough or not, you know? So I just find myself in that position, and it's, it's a, again, a frustrating one.
I'm going to echo what you just said. I feel that, um, you know, the Planning Commission is now studying the general plan. Excuse me. And one of the, or many of the items, uh, address issues of urban design and, and how can we make our city more attractive and safer and inviting? And, um, my initial reaction to this sign was that it's not really a sign, it's a, it's almost a billboard. It's electronic, it's in your face, it's big, um, and it's at a very busy intersection where public safety is, is an issue. But I would, um, and hearing, hearing the rest of the argument tonight from staff that across the street in the commercial zone, 35-foot pole signs are allowed, um, I would encourage, and, and I would actually like to go on the record as saying this, that the sign ordinance for the city needs to be reexamined and revised, because 25 and 35-foot signs of this nature only add to the visual clutter of our city and take away from the attractiveness of it. And you can go down any suburban highway that's lined with retail and, you know, fast food and you name it, and there might be a hospital or a medical building in between too. They're not attractive places. They don't, they don't induce people to walk or ride a bike. They're car-oriented, and I don't think that's the direction Prevo wants to go, so. I'm just going to say the sign ordinance needs to be revised for the long term. That's my two cents. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I don't have a comment, but I'd like to move things along by making a motion. And I, I would move that we, uh, approve the request for conditional use permit of the 25-foot-tall electronics display sign on Fifth West and 1134 North in the Healthcare Facilities HCI Zone.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of approval of Item 1?
One moment, if I could.
Sorry?
I would also like to include the addition of the setback as approved by IHC and Yesco, and the dimming of the sign from the hours that have been noted, so.
Thank you.
That's, thank you.
So amended. Second amended.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of approval of Item 1?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Aye. So does the motion carry?
Five in favor of the motion, two against the motion, and one abstain.
So the motion carries. All right, Item 2, and this will be for a recommendation to Municipal Council. The Community Development Department requests a code amendment to Chapter 14.20, the SC3 Zone, to establish an open space requirement for the residential portion of mixed-use developments within this zone. This has citywide impact, and Mr. Corey will present this item.
Sorry, Mr. Corey's gone, so Mr. Ardmore will present. So, the purpose of this amendment, um, back in January of last year, 2017, Council passed an amendment to the SC3 Zone allowing residential uses. They passed that at a maximum of 20%. Um, uh, however, when that was adopted, uh, no amenity requirement was adopted, like all of our other, um, low-density, medium-density, high-density residential zones have amenity requirements based on the percentage of either the project area or the, the floor area. Um, so this amendment is just simply to fix that. We believe that requiring amenity space in these kind of projects improve the quality of life and, and get to reach the goals of Prevo City's general plan by providing a, a sustainable living space for, for owner occupants and residents that, that makes them want to live there for a long time. Um, so we, we simply took the requirements from the established medium-density residential zone, uh, as the amenity requirement for the residential use in SC3. However, uh, because it's part of a mixed-use project, which could either be vertical or horizontal, uh, we wanted to make sure that it was going to be a usable space. It was going to be something that's convenient to the residents and not some kind of, um, large gathering space for the commercial areas. Uh, so we did add a location, uh, you'll see, section, subsection C, uh, a location standard to that. So we, this is our proposal. If you have any questions, I, I'll try to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion from the commissioners?
This just seemed to be consistent with the way we've been progressing and other, I'd like your opinion of, of how this fits in with the overall plan, but it seems consistent with the way we're doing things.
I, I think it does support livability and ensures that commercial development that also includes residential provides those residential amenities that are a key component to that. So I think it's a, a good addition to the code.
I move that we approve this ordinance. Sorry, oh, never mind. I don't move.
Was that a motion to approve Item 2? Or to recommend a positive, send a positive recommendation? Do we have a second?
Well, we need to have public hearing first.
Do we have someone here?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You can tell we're tired after that last item. Oh, are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Sorry. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this item? See none? I will return it back to the commissioners.
Okay, I move that we approve this ordinance change as, as outlined.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor of approving Item 2?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
We're recommending approval.
We're recommending. So we'll send a positive recommendation to Municipal Council for Item 2. Thank you. Oh, boy. Okay, Item 3. This will also be for a recommendation to Municipal Council. The Community Development Department requests a code amendment to Chapter 14.41 of the Prevo City Code to make various changes to the allowances and requirements of home occupations, including but not limited to the addition of certain definitions related to home occupations, limitations on promotional meetings, changes related to the number of customers and employees allowed with major home occupations, and the non-allowance for an accessory apartment and a major home occupation to be operated at the same time. This has citywide impact, and Mr. Maxfield will present this item.
Thank you. If you recall, you did hear an item, uh, very similar to this in your July, er, I'm sorry, your June, uh, 11th meeting. What happened was there were kind of parallel versions of the document written, and, uh, as it went to City Council, uh, there was a draft completed by the City Council or a committee of the City Council that has some different verbiage. And, uh, so we're just, uh, bringing that back. The Council would rather look at that verbiage on the document and go forward with that one. We thought the best way to do that, and they felt the best way to do that was come back to you so that it didn't look like they were circumventing anything. Now, did, we do have, uh, Mr., oh, go ahead.
So, Mr. Sewell, David Sewell is here, uh, to speak to this item. Um, he's, he was instrumental in working with staff to come up with these, uh, changes that are being proposed, and so he would just like to address the Council, the Planning Commission, about, um, the process we've gone through and the reasoning behind some of those changes.
Great, thank you.
So my name is Dave Sewell. I'm here in my individual capacity as a council member, and I want to be clear that I'm not representing the Council. Just a, a brief background, well, actually, before that, let me just say that I really appreciate your service on the Planning Commission. I'm a regular reader of your, uh, discussions and reports, so. And furthermore, it's great to see a full house here. I'm not sure I've ever seen eight Planning Commission members here at the same time, so I think that's great. So a little background, this, um, uh, proposal got started in January when I started working with several constituents and a few neighborhood chairs, one of whom is here. Started talking with some members of Community Development, found out that they were independently working on, uh, a, a few proposed amendments as well. So we got together and decided to merge those, uh, proposals together. Uh, the result of that was an executive summary and an ordinance draft. Came to the Council twice in work meeting. Uh, the first time, there was a, a tweak that resulted from that, and then the second time, there was a unanimous vote to send the draft to you for your review and recommendation. Little miscommunication after that, as was mentioned, and didn't realize there was sort of a parallel, uh, draft going on at the same time, and, and so there was a little confusion there. So what, we thought the clearest thing to do would be to just come back to the original draft that we had voted to send to you, so. Oh, it's very similar to what you saw before, but there are a few differences, or a couple of extra things that were added that I believe we'll be coming back to again later, independently from Community Development. And then there were a couple of things that didn't quite, uh, match up with the executive summary, but I thought it would probably be best to just walk through, uh, the executive summary and what's different from this proposal from the current ordinance. And if we're talking about a point that was covered very well before and you'd like to skip over that, just let me know, and we'll try to get through this as quickly as we can. So, um, one of the first, uh, things we wanted to do was clarify a few definitions. Believe it or not, just the definition of the word customer has, um, there's been some confusion related to that, incidents where it has been interpreted as a large group of 25 or more, and so we just wanted to make sure that that type of misinterpretation didn't happen again and to clarify that. And we also wanted to clarify that an employee is anyone who's working in the business, regardless of whether they're paid or not, because that's another misinterpretation that we've seen in the past as well. in the past as well. Okay, so where do I point this? Okay, and it doesn't have to be pointed any. It's much more relaxing over here, actually. Did I go too? Okay, thank you. So if I would characterize the proposed amendments, there are some clarifications. We tried to close a few loopholes. This one is one here where we realized that there's no limit at all at the number of customers that can come to promotional meetings, so we're proposing that that be limited to a maximum of twelve. Another loophole that has caused problems is that there's no restrictions currently on operating hours for customer visits, although there are currently in the ordinance for employees. And we actually have had neighbors woken up well past midnight by customers visiting a home occupation, and so most of the other ordinances that we looked at do have limitations on customer hours, so we're proposing eight AM to nine PM for that, for customer visits, with one exception, which we'll get to in a moment. So this is another one. This came from community development. In an instance where there is an accessory apartment, you've got some additional impact from traffic and parking, and it's proposed that to combine that with the additional impact of a major home occupation is more impact than we would like, and so we're proposing that if there is an accessory apartment, that a major home occupation not be allowed. And that, in any case, sufficient off-street parking must be provided.
So obviously, minor would still be allowed, just not major.
Yes, thank you. Then on the hours of operation, currently in the code, let's see here, okay. So on the hours of operation, the thinking was that for a minor home occupation, doesn't generate a lot of impact, at most, two customers an hour. That could go from eight to nine. Major home occupation currently in the code, employees are limited to eight to five. We felt like the intent of that was to limit the higher impact of a major home occupation to the daytime hours, when there would be less of a concern about parking traffic impacts because a lot of people are gone. So, but, so for a minor home occupation, you could go till nine o'clock, or for a major home occupation that was only having up to two customers an hour, could go to nine o'clock. But if you had more than two customers per hour, or if you had employees, that that part of the operation would end at five. I don't think I explained that very well. Did, you got it? Okay, thank you. All right, next point. So this is a, there's an exception on the number of employees currently in the ordinance. Normally, it's one, but for a major home occupation that doesn't have customer visits, currently allows up to three, two additional, in other words. We're proposing scaling that back to two. We only allow, to make that kind of more compatible with what we do, on a minor home occupation, you can have up to two customers, up to two parking spaces, and that would bring that more into parity with that. And just a little bit of history on that, how that got in there. I have a major home occupation permit. About ten or fifteen years ago, I had one part-time employee. I came into community development and said, I don't have any customers visiting my home. Can we increase the number of employees allowed in that particular case to two? And they said, well, why don't we make it three? And I didn't object, but I think that is going farther than we need to go. So that's the proposal there. Another situation here is, again, for a home occupation that doesn't bring customers to the premises, that the employee visiting hours would not be restricted to five, but could go till nine o'clock. That was the tweak that we did in that first council meeting. Next, let's see. Okay, that's promotional meetings, just a repeat of that for the major home occupation. Last item, we found that this, this mechanism that's currently in the code to allow the fee to be waived if all of the property owners within a three-hundred-foot distance sign a petition has caused a number of problems. A lot of, a lot of people don't do it because they can't get everyone to sign, or someone will sign when they didn't, weren't really in favor of it because their neighbor appeared at the door and asked them to sign it, and things like that. And we just felt that it would be better not to have that mechanism in place. Okay, and so this executive summary, I think we've really pretty much covered anything in there. If you have any questions, I'll just kind of move through it quickly, but these are all the same points that we just covered in the code. Okay? Clarification of customer, hours for customer visits, not having both accessory apartments and home occupations, major home occupation, off-street parking for business-related vehicles, definition employee, limit on promotional meetings, getting rid of this conditional use permit fee waiver mechanism. And the last slide I have, this is a comparison of ten cities' home occupation ordinance. I did a little research on this. I was just curious kind of where Provo fell on the spectrum. And I won't spend a lot of times on this, but it talks about how many employees you can have, number of customers per hour, number of customers at one time. Some ordinances have limits on the maximum number of customers per day. And just to kind of summarize, what I found is that if you lined all ten of these cities up on the, on a spectrum, excuse me, Provo is kind of way over here on the spectrum in terms of the amount of impact to residential areas that it allows. And so I feel that one of our goals in kind of tightening this up a little bit, clarifying some things, is to keep us from going too far in that direction. I think the general trend is as cities get larger, they tend to tighten up on these kinds of regulations a little bit. That's what I've noticed. Anyway, that's all I've, all I've got. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions? Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for helping put this together, Councilman Sewell. I appreciate that a lot. The question goes to definition of customer, and we've talked a little bit about this with some applicants in the past who have wanted to put, you know, dance, training, studios, or that kind of thing in their basement. And you get a customer, which is little Ann, and then her mom's with her, and her mom's got to bring the two other kids with her that she's got in tow. Now, you've got four people there, sure, maybe one car. Customer number two comes along with their three others. Sure, there's still only two vehicles there now, but now there's eight people in there. Is that taken into account? Is that anything that we need to be concerned about? Or, you know, as far as the customer is concerned, we're talking about just the two little girls who are taking the dance training? Any thoughts?
Yes, that's a great question. We struggled over that for a long time. Tried to, at first, we tried to come up with a definition that would cover the common cases like family members and things, and went back and forth with, with our council attorney, Brian Jones, Gary McGinn, and several others. And we, you know, we talked about things like degrees of consanguinity and things like that, and we just could not come up with a simple definition. So we finally gave up on that and relied on the general principle that in most cases, a customer is one person, and we understand that community development is going to use common sense if a mother's there with a child and not, not enforce on that as being more than one person.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, and overall, we're looking at impact to the neighborhood and the area, and those people are inside. It is just a couple of vehicles, and whoever has to come, has to come. I don't think that's that big of a deal. I think there might be other situations or scenarios that might arrive or arise that we haven't heard yet that could be different, but, you know, we'll, I guess we'll have to take those on as they come.
Any other questions for Mr. Sewell?
I have a question.
Ms. Ellsworth?
So I think what I understood is this excludes having a major home occupation in addition to an accessory dwelling unit. Like, you couldn't have both, right? You could have one or?
That is the proposal, yes.
Okay. What if there were enough onsite parking? Is, I mean, is parking a concern there? Like, what if you're teaching piano lessons in the morning, and then you have a, you know, renter in your basement in the evening, and there was parking for everybody?
The current proposal doesn't address that. It's, I guess, thinking is that it's still a lot of impact, maybe you can contain the parking, but there's still going to be a lot of traffic coming and going, but, so we did not attempt to address that directly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's basically why we proposed what we did, is that even if there was enough onsite parking, the intent of the home occupation ordinance is that the neighbors wouldn't be aware of it. And when you try to put all that on one piece of property, even if there's enough parking, it's a real stretch to say the neighbors aren't aware of that. In fact, what we hear is from the neighbors is that they're very much aware. So that's why we wrote that, proposed it the way we did.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sewell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to invite any members, any neighborhood chairs present who would like to address this item to please come forward. And please state your name and also sign in, please.
My name is David Wright, and I am the neighborhood chair of the Rock Canyon neighborhood, and I would like to express my appreciation to you for your service and to David Sewell for taking this project on. We all know that if there's no problem, visible problem, nobody cares, but the problem happens when the problems become visible, and it's important to have code that will protect us. We have had situations where we've had over twenty cars parked on the street at the same time, numerous times during the summertime, and people coming out late at night, causing disturbances. So something needs to be done, and I think people will be reasonable about this, as long as there's not, you don't notice anything different than the rest of the neighbors, it's not a problem. But whether it does become a problem, we need some code to help us out. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the community who would like to speak to this item?
Good evening, my name is Mary Lee Franzen, and I live in Breyer. And I would like to ask you to do the three following things. One, strike out the line that prohibits a home, a major home occupation for operating concurrently with an accessory apartment. Two, to extend, to add to paragraph four, a caveat for childcare. And that paragraph is the one that speaks about extending the hours of operation if you don't have an outside employee, and I'll go into the details in just a minute. And then three, add to the paragraph that says that off-street parking has to be provided if needed during the onsite inspection by the inspector before the permit is issued. And to explain a little bit, I have an accessory permit and a major home occupancy permit. I have a childcare business. Twenty-two of the twenty-eight childcares in Provo City are home-based under what is called a family group daycare, which means eighty percent, basically. The, Ms. Ellsworth asked, as you know, about the piano teacher and whether this is a question of parking or not. When I applied, it was about parking mostly, the allowance. This has been thoroughly debated in the United States and in Utah. In fact, there's Utah code that says, like it was mentioned before, that conditional use permits shall be approved unless the impact cannot be mitigated. Why such strong language shall be approved? Well, on one hand, yes, we do have on the balance neighbors not even knowing or being aware that the use you're giving your property exists. That's one consideration. But then on the other side of the balance, you have property use rights. Property use rights are some of the most important rights associated with the ownership of property, and that's why this has been such an important topic of discussion. I suggest that instead of having a blank-out denial where both can't operate, we trust the current system that exists, where the applicant has to apply, they have to provide a map, they need to tell you what their parking is. If you want to improve the code, I suggest you actually specify how many parking spots are required for childcare, as this is one of your most-used home occupations, I would say. There isn't one. So when I applied, that was where the question came up. Some staff said one, some said two, some said three, somebody wanted seven. So that's where we got stuck. But if you were to say one is enough, I mean, when you drop off a kid for care, you're not there for more than a couple of minutes. And so there are solutions to that. May I take my child's two minutes?
If you could wrap it up quickly, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. On the second point of extending hours, childcare is very well-regulated by state law. There's an office of childcare which defines how many square feet have to be used per child. So if you allow one employee after hours, that would allow the provider to serve another eight children, from eight to sixteen. That would impact eighty-eight families that need care in the evening. That's your firefighters, your nurses, your, you know, your servants that work at night. And then just to wrap up point three, the code is denying accessory apartments. It's very targeted. I believe that that is because staff has told me they want to take away my legal use, so there'll be a step towards it. But what about people who provide care in apartments or in duplexes? I suggest you consider how this change will impact childcare, as you consider the diverse socioeconomic capacities of people who provide care in the city at large and not just my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the community who would like to speak to this item? If not, I will turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion, comment. Yes, Mr. Pepperon?
If I could say one thing, all of the amendments that you've just looked at are in direct response to problems we've experienced. Like Mr. Sewell was saying, I think Provo's ordinance is very permissive, and I think it's time that some of that be scaled back, and that's why this is coming forward the way it is.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Howard? I was just going to say that I think the ordinance, as it's been written and clarified, it does just that, clarifies the problems that we've already experienced on the commission, and I'm in favor of that.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I like the amendments that have been made, but I, as was presented, I do worry about the adverse effects on those who do provide childcare in our community, because I consider that a really important part of the nature of our community, a critical service, and definitely a necessary component for many, many families in this family-centric community. community.
And I'll just add to Ms. Ellsworth's comments. And I'm, you know, I haven't dealt with the complaints the way that staff has about, say, people having accessory apartments and home occupation businesses. But even before Ms. Franson spoke, that's the one that struck me as, I was least persuaded by the nature of the problem and then the solution to that problem, to not allow anyone who has an accessory apartment. In instances where the home also includes an accessory apartment, major home occupations are not allowed unless use of the accessory apartment is terminated. Yeah, that wasn't satisfying to me. I don't feel like the nature of the problem is, produces, should produce that particular response. And I am, I hadn't thought of this, but I am persuaded by Ms. Franson's suggestion that there does seem to be a bit of classism in that, in that proposed amendment to this, the home occupations ordinance, that, you know, people that are trying to make ends meet and by having accessory apartments, by having home occupations, it seems like to not allow that is, yeah, is classist.
Commissioners? Mr. Smith?
I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Ellsworth and Mr. Rowan. And I would almost love to hear Mr. Sewell's response to this as a potential applicant with community development on what we've discussed, and potentially omitting, you know, number 15, line 59 and 60. Love to hear your thoughts.
I should probably defer to community development on this one. This was one of the items that came through them. It makes sense to me, just based on overall impact. As Mr. Pepperoni said before I turned the mic over to you, even if there is sufficient parking, it's, you've still got a pretty big operation going there that is, doesn't seem to me to fit the definition, that it should hardly be noticed.
There was a daycare several years ago that asked to be approved as a major home occupation and for a Montessori school, and they had an accessory apartment. And they willingly gave up the accessory apartment as their, part of their conditional use approval for the daycare. When the next one came along that utilized both, there was very, very much public testimony from the neighbors in the area that both of those uses on the same lot made for an undesirable situation in the neighborhood. And when a single-family home is allowed to have an accessory apartment, that's an additional impact right there. When you add on to that a major home occupation, that's another impact on top of that. And staff feels that that's too much impact in a single-family residential area. One of the others, fine. One of the others has been done all over the city. But doing both is rare. And in the cases, case where both has been done, it has, in the opinion of staff, been overwhelming. So we feel like the door to that should be closed. In the particular situation, Ms. Franson, this is, these are amendments to Title 14, so she would be legally nonconforming. In order for her to lose nonconforming rights, they would have to be changed as to Chapter 6, the business licensing section. That's all I have.
So, community development felt that this revision would address a potential negative to the greater community, as opposed to looking at or being concerned with individual business operations.
Yes.
And just to clarify, as with anything, currently, people who are currently in this situation are grandfathered in until or unless they make a change which makes an application required. At that point, they would have to come into compliance with the new.
If those changes are made to business licensing, because a business license has to be renewed every year, and you don't get grandfather rights under the business license regulations. Under Title 14 zoning, you do get grandfather rights. If you're an established business, and then the rules change, you get nonconforming status, which is what commonly is referred to as grandfather rights, grandfather status.
I hate to press on this, but is there a way to share just a little bit more about the nature of the complaints? Is it just the kind of in and out? Is it the noise level? Is it, I mean, can you help us understand just a little bit more the type of, you know, the type of inconveniences or disturbances that having both an accessory apartment and a major home occupation pose to neighbors? I'm just thinking, I live in a neighborhood where there are a lot of accessory apartments, and I just don't, I mean, I'm just not aware of any, you know, I don't feel inconvenienced at all by people who have accessory apartments. Now, that's not to suggest that none of my neighbors feel the same, that all my neighbors feel the same way. I mean, I can, I recognize that. But I'm just, yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit, a lot more details.
I think most of the complaints relate to traffic going in and out and parking on-site. At the administrative hearing on this issue, there was testimony given primarily to those issues, the lack of parking on-site, and the drop-off time periods and the drop-off kinds of needs. Okay?
Okay. Now, although I understand, I agree, I tend to agree with your position or opinion on accessory apartments. I know we have members of the city council who believe as soon as you allow an accessory apartment, you've changed the nature of the single-family neighborhood. And so that's the other opinion of that issue. Yeah. So that helps clarify my, my lack of understanding. I guess I'm just not bothered at all by people parking on the street. And this comes up over and over again, I know, in conversations we have about a variety of, a variety of things. And it just never computes with me that, you know, if someone parks on the street, I just don't care. And so I continue to have, this helps me understand why I continue to be a little bit befuddled by this. I just, that complaint is a, it's just a nonstarter for me. I don't know why we have to care so much about people parking on the street. I mean, you know, it just seems like an odd possessiveness of something that people don't own. It's community property. You know, it's the city's property. And, you know, if there were, if there were kind of city issues rather than kind of privacy issues, then that would make sense to me. But to have a private citizen complain about what people do with something that's not on their property, that strikes me as a strange, really strange thing. So that's where I'm coming from, I think.
In this particular case, this house is located very close to BYU, where commuting students tend to want to park. So the commuting students already take up all the on-street parking. So now, when somebody wants to drop off somebody at the daycare, they're not along the curb, but they're next to the car that's parked along the curb. And that starts to impede with traffic. And so...
Yeah. Yeah. I understand that. Are there other solutions to that beyond, you know, besides this? It seems to me like there might be. And I know that Mrs. Franson has pursued some of those alternative, you know, parking permit programs and those kinds of things. But, yeah, this, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Commissioners? Any further discussion, motion? Mr. Howard?
Madam Chair, I would move that we recommend approval of item three, the request text amendment to Section 14.41 of the zoning ordinance, and as attached in Exhibit A in this report, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Are those in favor of approving, forwarding a positive recommendation for approval of item three?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. All abstaining?
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
I think we had four that were in favor. Dave?
I am not in favor.
So all those who are in favor, raise their hands.
One, two, three.
Then, opposed?
Opposed? Raise your hands, please. Two?
Very exciting, Mike.
And then, you two are abstaining?
So it looks like that is a positive recommendation with two abstentions from voting for item three.
Just clarifies, Russ and Shannon?
Right, abstained, yes.
All right. Item four, Provo City Economic Development Department requests a code amendment to Section 14.20.160, parentheses seven, to increase the amount of residential development in a regional shopping center zone, SC3, from 20% to 33%. This would have citywide application. And Mr. Ardmore will present this item.
Okay, thank you. All right. So this is our second amendment on SC3 tonight. So we're somewhat familiar with this already. So again, in January 2017, the council passed this amendment to allow up to 20% of our projects to develop into residential units. This amendment has been brought forward by the city's Economic Development Department to increase that up to 33%, with some other additional allowances, and with the intention to encourage more mixed use, encourage more businesses and development to the city in those zones. So there are a few things I want to touch on. Again, it proposes up to 33% in SC3. It also proposes that residential units above not, a non-residential ground floor, like commercial or office, wouldn't, would not count towards that 33%. So you can kind of imagine how that would play out in a development. In staff, planning staff's review of this, we had a few concerns. We did some analysis and some other things. One of the things that we were concerned about is, this is now a third of the commercial tax base from those SC3 zones, potential, that the city could be losing out on if we go from 20 to 33%. There's also a concern where we're trying to focus in our downtown and our ITOD zones, trying to bring these type of residential projects to those areas, where land is going to be much cheaper, development's going to be cheaper in these outlawing SC3 zones. There is a fear that that could take the development away from our downtown center to these shopping center zones. So there's just a couple of concerns that staff had. Did an analysis here on what the numbers would look like. So basically, there's five general areas of SC3 zone. You could see how the numbers play out there. What we currently have could potentially take 61 acres of the 306 with his proposal. It could take 101 acres of that SC3 zone.
So 50-acre difference?
Yeah. So here's the language. With staff's concerns, we just wanted to make those known. But we understand the backing for this. We understand the long-term goals of this. So we have recommended approval, recommended that the planning commission recommend approval to the council on this item. But just wanted to note those concerns that we had. So I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. I have one question. It seems that this would, in some ways, reward vertical mixed use, because you're not counting the units that are above commercial retail space.
That's correct. That's one benefit that we saw to it. It really does influence that type of development that the city does want to see.
So if you're encouraging it by not counting those units, why do you need to also allow for an increase in the residential component?
Maybe the applicant could address that.
Just a question. Mr. Rowan?
Is there a way to get a little bit more of a backstory of where this proposal's coming from, or is that something, again, that the applicant?
I think the applicant could be well-versed to address that as well.
Okay, I mean it. So you may cover this anyways. I would love to know, you know, what the history is of this. Why is the city, why is economic development asking this? Is it driven by the city? Is it driven by a particular developer? Would appear, it's driven by the mix here. And I would just love to know the backstory on this.
Any other questions for staff from the commissioners? If not, I will invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Cameron Christiansen. I work for Provo City Economic Development. To address your question, Commissioner Rowan, so we were approached by a developer and other developers as well, talking about this. And as Mr. Ardmore was mentioned, that this would help with the mixed development and mixed use within these SC3 zones. Now, we realized that potentially, it could increase the residential component to these zones. However, if you look at the amendment, it also discusses that, first, the ground floor should be retail. And so we're still capturing that tax base on the first floor. And there still is that retail component, also with the added component that there is more residential, creating more population density within these SC3 zones, creating more walkable space. And as Provo and the surrounding areas are becoming more and more urban with public transit, it creates, like I said, more walkable zones for these, the zones to provide bigger benefit for the city in increasing its, again, its density, its population, its tax base, and the residential components as well. Hopefully, that answers your question.
So, I don't know that it satisfactorily answers my question. I mean, it seems odd to me, the economic development is coming to the planning commission and then to city council and say, we want to give away 50 acres of commercial usage. We think that'd be great for economic development. It just doesn't make any sense to me why you would be doing that. What is it, what is it that you feel giving a third of the commercial area, site area in those SC3 zones, rather than a fifth? What does that do to increase what is already an anemic, an anemic commercial property in our city? I just, it makes zero sense to me. So I would love just, and I'm not persuaded by it makes more walkable spaces. I, you know, I just want something a little bit more, I think, than that.
Okay. So as far as creating a more residential and more, it allows for, I apologize. Mr. Walter, could you help address this?
I'm sorry if I seem antagonistic. I'm not trying to be antagonistic. I'm just really confused, you know, in a genuine way. I just, is there, is this being driven by individual developers saying, for our project, this isn't going to work for us, and therefore we, or did you, as an economic development team, say, it would be a great idea if we gave away 50 acres? away fifty acres of our commercial use to residential. We think that would really help drive economic development here in, in Provo."
Hi, David Walter, Redevelopment Agency for the City of Provo. Good evening. Part of this is in recognition of the fact that the retail landscape has significantly changed, and there is not going to be as many players in that space any longer. And so we have anticipated that, similar to the mix, that other larger spaces in the SC Three zone are going to incorporate residential uses into their properties. We believe that this will happen with Brixton Capital at the mall. We think that there are other opportunities. At the golf course, they'll probably have some of their spaces devoted to residential uses. And it's not, it's an opportunity for us to provide some flexibility to the developers and the owners of those spaces.
Can, can you help me understand a little bit more perhaps about why thirty-three percent? Is that, is that a number that has been really successful in other cities, say, you know, I know we're not the same size as Salt Lake, but does Salt Lake have in their ordinances, you know, like this, that will give thirty-three percent over residential? Or even, I don't know the numbers at the University Place Mall, and I know they've gone from hundred percent commercial to now including some residential. Are, are they at thirty-three percent? I mean, where's this number coming from?
It was just a, a way for us, it was just an opportunity that it sounded right, a third. It's not something that we went out and surveyed what the other communities that surround us are doing. We're just aware that other communities are incorporating residential into their commercial spaces, and this was, uh,
Okay.
for us to do the same. Kind of more level the playing field.
Just kind of eyeballed it and said, "Third sounds about right."
But, you know, for example, we just recently went through this process where, you know, we had the Sears, the former Sears building at the mall. It was proposed to be office use. It's going to be in office use. It's still going to be in the commercial. At some point, I think, with that excess property, I shouldn't say excess, but with the surrounding property that the Brixton Capital has at the mall, they would anticipate at some point putting in residential, particularly with the mass transit, the UVX line bus stop, that'll, that'll be there.
Great. And I'll just say, I mean, I'm all for mixed use. I'm just, again, I remain a bit perplexed by the, the percentages and where those are coming from, and, and thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Is it fair to say, I mean, in my estimation, the way I saw this was, you put something in like the mix, you want to bring your residents that are going to live, work, play, use, and everything, shop right there, and put them right there. Is that kind of, that's kind of how I looked at it. Whatever the number was, twenty percent, thirty-three percent, it didn't really matter. Whatever, I, I imagine it's going to be different based on the, the potential development.
Yes, I think that, that's, we just, there was an opportunity for us to provide spaces for people to live and work and shop in one area. So I think part of the issue is that this was kind of a parallel track, the app, the previous applicant on Item Number Two, which was the mix, and then we're pursuing this as well, just as a separate, separate track, so.
Mr. Rowan?
So if that's the case, and I, and, you know, I certainly understand where Mr. Smith is coming from, it would seem to me that there need to be, if that were the case, there'd need to be much more in place than just that thirty-three percent of the overall project site area could be residential. It would, it, because if you have thirty-three percent of the site area, say, with townhomes on them, that's going to do nothing to support the commercial use. I mean, are you saying thirty-three percent of the area at a high-density development is, is what will require? Or, I mean, is there anything in place right now in, in this proposal that would suggest something along those lines, or is it just thirty percent of any kind of residential?
It's, that, right now, it's thirty-three percent, although the incentive would be that if you did have mixed use, where you had stacked residential above the commercial or the retail space on the first floor, that, those units wouldn't be counted against your thirty-three percent.
Right, but that still doesn't address the, the concern that I'm articulating about. Literally, one-third of the, of the chunk of that property could be single-family home theoretically, or, or duplex, right? There's nothing in place right now that would say, "If you do have thirty-three percent of residential, it needs to be a certain density." That's the only thing in my mind that would make Mr. Ma, Mr. Smith's logic work, and that, that to some degree makes, makes sense to me, but does, does this have that right now, your proposal?
Right now, I don't believe it has a mandate that you do the higher density.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Rowan's comment. I would imagine, at the end of the day, economic development's goal is to increase the intensity of land use, which therefore increases land values and property taxes, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Revenue. So by allowing low-density residential on a commercial site, you're not accomplishing that goal. By stacking residential and creating a higher-intensity use with commercial, residential with commercial vertical stacking, you could achieve greater property values. But I would hate to see, again, thirty-three percent of a commercial site given over to residential with no definition of what kind of residential that is and what kind of intensity of use that residential would bring.
Again, the thirty-three percent was not, it's not something that we're strictly adhere, we would strictly want to adhere to. We're open to some within between the twenty and thirty-three percent.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
Um, I guess I have a few different perspectives on this, and one is that, you know, we've talked about taking another look at our general plan. We anticipate making some changes to that, and I'd love to understand some more things about Provo City, our inventory of space for retail developments like what typically you'd see in a shopping center, maybe regionally-oriented kind of zoning district, and how we stack up maybe with some other communities in our area and in other places, relative to our ability to serve a population like what Provo has with the land that's available. And I think it'd be really premature, in fact, I wince even at the idea that we've already talked about twenty percent of the land area, at least in these areas, being made available for another use, when I'm inclined to think that, that we probably are a, a little bit, maybe underserved, just relative to the area that's available for the kinds of retail developments, again, that you typically see in these projects. So for me, it's, it's maybe two different steps. One is looking at the community as a whole and seeing, I mean, is there a surplus now, you know, that potentially could be made available for a different land use without sacrificing some opportunity for commerce and that kind of a thing. But then also, I'd really want to see how it worked before we changed the zoning and maybe ended up with something that, you know, we'd look at and just, and regret. So this idea may have some merit, honestly, at face value. There are things about it that, that really, really make me wince, like I said. In fact, you know, maybe from a zoning perspective, if there's an area that currently is zoned shopping center that might function better with a mixed-use kind of project, you know, whatever nature that would be, I might, and I'll, I'll admit, I don't know all the details of different zones that could be employed, but using a mixed-use zone to make a project happen versus just changing the zoning opportunities for all of the shopping center zones in the city, in my view, might be a, a better approach to take.
I would add, too, that this is, the mix, for example, since we're talking about it here and there, is located at what could be a TOD zone, and it may be much more appropriate, instead of changing
The shopping.
commercial, a shopping center zoning regulations, to change the zoning to something that's more appropriate for TOD development as a big picture, you know, rather than changing every shopping SC Three in the city to something that would allow this. Sorry, don't need to.
Oh, Mr. Rowan?
I just wanted to, I mean, we're, we're looking at the general plan, and, and I just, we haven't got to the economic development section yet, but I just wanted to read, I'm sure, I know you're very well aware of it, but because we haven't gotten to it, this is what it says, "Major community entrance, under the section seven point two point two, major community entrance development. Major entrances, or gateway areas, as they are referred, as they are referenced on the land use map, in Provo move large volumes of traffic and provide significant opportunities for development that is different or more intense than currently being used. Because these areas experience a daily in and outflow of workers and visitors to the city, the economic development potential for these areas is much greater and should be a focus of economic development. This may include limited and specific, more intense and dense development in and around the bus rapid transit routes and stations. There are six such major entrances to Provo, one of them, again, being University Parkway, where the, where the mix is." You know, that, that in our general plan does not jive at all, in my mind, with, with this proposal. I just, I, I can't, again, I can't make sense of it. It just seems so odd, and especially to not have any more conditions of, you know, if we are going to give away thirty-three percent of our commercial development area or shopping centers, to not, to not have any, any kind of limits or, or parameters or instructions, that needs to be really intense residential use seems really potentially catastrophic. And I just, I just worry that, as, as Dave says, that we're being really premature about, about this. And I, I hope it's not for a, a particular developer who's, who's got a project, because this, giving away fifty acres of our, of our shopping center because you're eyeballing it and saying, "Well, thirty-three percent sounds good." That, that, I'm not comfortable at all with that.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Um, I just want to agree with Dave and Jayman and Deborah. And it feels a little awkward to talk, to, to think that we might be talking economic development into economic development, but perhaps there's just some, some information that we're all missing, and we could work on this together.
Concur.
Any other questions for the applicant commissioners? No, thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and a motion. And this will be a recommendation to municipal council.
Unless there's any more. You'll be surprised that I have nothing more to say.
Mr. Rowan?
I'd like to make a motion, and I make the motion that we forward a recommendation of denial of the purport, of the proposed, or of the request from Provo City Economic Development to amend Section fourteen point two zero point one six zero to increase the amount of residential development in a regional shopping center zone from twenty to thirty-three percent. I would include, I don't know if I can include what I just read from the general plan. Again, I know it's under revision, but it's line thirty-eight thirty through thirty-eight forty from the general plan. It's Section seven point two point two, just at, as something that we might add to that. And then I, I certainly would be, I know we've changed the way that we do staff reports. I feel passionately enough about this one that I would love to see the staff report and would, would love for all the commissioners to see the staff report, just to make sure we really capture as, as precise as we can the conversation.
Report of action?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, the report of action. Sorry about the, the language.
Do we have a second for Mr. Rowan's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor of forwarding a?
Recommendation of denial.
Recommendation of denial. That's like a positive negative. A recommendation of denial to municipal council for Item Four?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, just one.
Mr. Anderson?
This is now late, but I understood basically that the, the motion involved using the language that was referenced in the general plan as like a finding or a reason for the recommendation that was made, and I'd, I'd love to see it, if that's okay with everybody, kind of phrased that way, just relative to, I think that was your intent, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that was my intent. Yes, thanks for clarifying.
It was also my understanding that the reasons you gave about needing more time to study this and wanting more analysis, that, that, that will appear in the ROA
Yeah.
as some of your reasons. I, I,
Yeah.
that's what I understood you to be saying.
Right. And, and I think that the, that section in particular kind of captures the, the kind of big-picture rationale that I, I hear across the board. Then, yeah, I'd love for that report of action to capture some of the smaller, kind of more fine-grained things about, for example, if we are going to give thirty-three percent, you know, do we want to be a lot more specific about what kind of residential uses that needs to be? So I just want to make sure all of those things are captured as well.
Okay.
This, this is not to suggest that you don't take good notes. I just,
No, no, that's fine.
this, this seems really, really important to, to make sure we get all of this.
I missed who seconded the motion.
Mr. Smith, he had to go to a meeting.
Okay. That's fine.
So do we need to vote again?
No. Thank you.
So we will forward a recommendation for denial for Item Four. All right. Last item of the evening, Item Five, Jed Anderson requests project plan approval for a new industrial building located at approximately four thirty-three South eleven-hundred West in a light manufacturing M-one zone. This is in the Franklin neighborhood, and Mr. Mills will present this item.
Thank you very much. So I'll just go through a few slides for you folks and then go through the staff report. This is the project location of the applicant's proposed warehouse building. Eleven-hundred West is here, nine-hundred West is to the south, and then you see the freeway and the railroad tracks. The applicant has an existing operation in this facility here, and this is an expansion of that existing operation. This is a, a superimposed site plan plus the neighboring Tritera Town Home Project that's going in currently. And so the applicant's proposed building will be built here along about five feet from the property line. And then this actually represents a distance of about eighty-five feet to the nearest Town Home Development.
Townhouse unit.
Townhouse unit. That's correct. This is a, a slide that I snuck in there just to help everybody understand a little bit of the, the zoning Jackson Pollock that's going on here. So the, the applicant's property is in the M-one zone. A few years ago, the Tritera project was rezoned from M-one to LDR, Low Density Residential. And, and so that actually created some interesting scenarios for the applicant and, and for this property. The property, as I understand it, was originally owned by the city, and then the city offered it for sale to the applicant who purchased it with the intention of expanding the, the operation there. This is a better view of the site plan and what's going to go on there. This is just a very rudimentary rendition of a warehouse building of what's being proposed. We, we have not received official elevations or, or anything like that as yet. This process is still in the CRC process, and, and we'll be ongoing, working with the applicant. But in order to place the building on the site where the applicant wanted to be, the applicant requested zoning variance. Because of the nature of where the, the building would be, it actually encroaches into the transitional setbacks because of that LDR zone, where, where it would be is, is encroaching a bit. Also, there, because of this LDR zone, there's a continuation now imposed upon the applicant's property where there's some front yard landscaping requirements and things like that. So the applicant did submit an application to the zoning Board of Appeals and, Board of Adjustments, excuse me, and that was, that item was heard last Thursday evening. These are the specific These are the specific zoning variance requirements that the applicant was requesting. The applicant was granted that zoning variance based on the, the justification of, of where the location is, the circumstances surrounding the rezoning, and also based on the fact that the applicant is, is proposing to do a, a development on this project that is similar in nature to what's already existing, and, and the location of the property lends itself to this type of development. So the Board of Adjustments felt confident in doing that. This just gives you a little bit of background of what exactly the, the requirements that were being varied and waived to allow the structure to be placed in this location. It's important to note that there are still some ongoing site adjustments that might happen with this through the CRC process and things like that, but this also demonstrates that the proposed building will encroach into, because of the transitional setback requirements, there's a height setback requirement that the building would impose into, but that was approved as well. This slide gives you an example of just where exactly the building would be in relation to the proposed development, or, excuse me, the, the development that was approved already. The applicant has been working very closely with the developer of Tritera. This is an email from him as of January 6, 2016, stating that the developer is in support of this building and its location, and which was another reason that the Board of Adjustments felt confident in, in granting this request. So in going through our staff report, you probably read in there that there were a lot of caveats that we would recommend approval of this project based on the Board of Adjustments' findings and their approval. Given that they have approved this project and felt confident in it, we feel confident in recommending that the planning commission approve this PPA application. We would just encourage and suggest that you incorporate a condition of approval that the applicant comply with all CRC comments and recommendations prior to building permit approval. But that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mills?
What was some of the justification on reducing like the setback? And do I understand it right? So under normal circumstances, there would have been a 20-foot setback required between the building and the adjacent Town Home Project, and that was reduced to five?
Correct. Yeah, so some of the justification for that, the, if the project had never been rezoned, if the neighboring project had never been rezoned, that would not have been a requirement. Also, the applicant's operational endeavors for this, for this piece of property warrant that a, a building could be built on the site, but in order to have it operationally conducive to what the existing operation is, it needs to be located in this, in this part of the site, and they felt that that was, oh, go ahead.
If you move it over the 20 feet, you lose enough parking that you then really have to reduce the size of the building.
Right.
Also, although the Board of Adjustment didn't know this, or it wasn't played very heavily to them or explained very closely, both these properties were owned by the city, this one and this one.
Okay.
When that was sold for townhouse development, which we went out and tried to find a townhouse developer to do that, it was also sold to this developer at the same time. We knew that we were creating a very odd-shaped lot, and when it was hard to develop, so the odd shape was the hardship the board found. But both operators knew what each side was getting, and this operator even said he'd rather have it close than 20 feet away, because that 20 feet is going to create an alley between a barrier wall and the building, and he was afraid of activities that could end up going on in the alley that neither property owner would want.
Additionally, Provo Power, their service lines come right through here on the property, and reorienting the, the proposed building was very, very difficult, almost impossible. And I can let the applicant speak to this, but because of those existing lines, it was really difficult in order to place the, the proposed building on the site, so.
The town, sorry. Since the developer here is okay with that, what we've asked this builder to do, owner to do is get this building up before the townhouses that get, that are eventually going to go here get built, so that people know what they're getting, right? If you've gone out to that site, go to the townhouse or you see the townhouse units, townhouse plan. If you've gone out to that, most of these are built, but these aren't built yet, and it's actually turning out very nice. Remember, that was quite an argument to have whether these should front on the street or whether or not there should be a parking lot here. It's actually turning out very nice the way this was planned and approved. We just want to get this up before those people buy, so they know what they're getting.
In addition, the, the townhouse developer is building a, a wall between the two properties with appropriate landscaping and trees to shield and to screen. It was interesting to note that this is, if this had been a, just a regular single-family development, the requirement would have only been 30 feet from the property line. So if you include the, the 20 feet plus a 10-foot side yard of a traditional single-family dwelling, then this building would actually be only 30 feet from a regular single-family home, whereas in this case, because these are townhouses that already have a road separating these two, the distance to the actual townhouse is 85 feet, so.
You're saying if they were lots that backed up?
Correct. Yeah, so if these were just traditional lots under traditional subdivision, that would only be about 30 feet.
And, and this development is looked upon as a natural buffer between the industrial and the residentials to the south.
Right. And the reason why the city was anxious to get this sold and developed was we had a camping problem taking place right there in the stand of trees. Almost people were camping there in the, in the stand of trees.
It's a bizarre piece of property, but I think it's been creatively handled.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. If there are no questions, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Anderson.
I'll sign in real quick. Okay, I am Jed Anderson, and I guess to start, thanks, I, I manufacture things, so building, buildings not, not down my normal occupation, so I, I really appreciate all the help that the city's been in trying to figure this out and trying to orient this the right way to try and make it usable land. So, thank you. Any questions, or do you want me to tell you more about it? They, they did a good job, they summarized it up. There's not much more to say. It's a metal building, we're trying to make it match the other building next to it, trying to make it look, look good. I think we've, to this point, with what we've done there in the past years, we've, we've successfully made it look better than it did before and have better usage than it had before. I think the neighbors have been happy with what we're doing. We're, at this point, just trying to expand some more warehouse space, working with John Dester from Georgetown with the Tritera. He, he's actually, when we were talking about it, he actually pulled it to within five feet instead of 10, because of the very reason you pointed out. He wanted it right up there. We worried about the, what it would look like. He pointed out, we have a planter strip and a row of trees there that'll block it out. It should be just fine. So he's the one that kind of came up with some of that. As was pointed out, there's kind of two different things there. It could be 20 feet away, then when you look at the height of the building, that would say it should be about 10 feet away, depending on which of the, the code you're looking at. So we're, we're not, I don't think, way out of alignment there, but if it was 20 feet from the property line and someone built a single-family home 10 feet from their property line on the other side, that's 30 feet between the two. I think that the, the, the code has substantially met with an 85-foot buffer and a road between the two. I think, I think justice is done to all property owners if we can make this happen.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you very much. It does not appear there are any neighborhood chairs or members of the public to speak to this item, so I will turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and a motion.
I drove out there this afternoon, and you can see from this, the slide where you had the zoning, it is, it's an unusual area, and when I drove up there, I was like, this is a really weird spot for townhomes, and this is a really weird spot for, you know, light manufacturing, and it's just a weird spot. And this neighborhood to the south, I think, is in some declining condition, so what's being built in the Tritera condos is, is probably the, the gem of this area. And you can see, like, it's sandwiched between the railroad tracks and I-15. It's, it is what it is. That's all I got.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Motion? Mr. Howard?
I'd echo what she said. I think, I, I do think it adds, well, it's an unusual piece, but it'll help with affordable housing down there, so. I'd move approval unless there's further discussion.
Do it.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I move approval of item five, according to the staff recommendation, that the project is contingent upon the applicant being granted a variance to allow the proposed building to encroach into the side yard setback, height setback requirements, and to reduce the front yard landscaping requirements. Additionally, staff recommends, and, and part of the motion is, to comply with all CRC comments prior to receiving a building permit.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of approving item five?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so the motion is, or the item is approved unanimously. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Hearing adjourned.
You've been. My first instinct was that he was a judgmental